All right, I'll call to order the village council regular meeting today. It's Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Mador, will you call the roll, please?
Yep. Find my pen here. Bojo?
Here.
Nikasia?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Helmut?
Yeah.
Cook?
That's serious.
Item number four is approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for that item.
Motion, who's on here?
There is an updated agenda that was in front of you.
Yeah, I emailed it out today, but very minor.
Support. Motion made by Bojo, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Next, our public hearing. So the first one is for the CDBG Project Year 2025. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear from residents regarding community needs and receive comments on past programs. Mr. Mador, do you want to just say a couple of words about this so our public knows?
Yeah. Part of the problem is, you know, trying to use the funds and having to fit into pigeonholes of the programs that we have. And so we'll be doing a couple of different ones. One, the following is reprogramming. And then obviously each year you guys do a little bit of the public services for sustenance programs. So that's another qualified consideration. And we're just are required to do this, go through the motion to get us back in the books.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:03.
Support.
All those in favor to open the hearings, say aye.
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 Any nay? Okay, the hearing is now open. So if there is anyone from the public that would like to speak about CDBG Project Year, this is our Community Development Block Grant and potential projects or past benefits or comments, please feel free to step up to the podium.
Will this microphone off if they want to?
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll talk to you later.
Right off the top.
I should probably start off by saying that we're talking about past programs. My name is Patricia Shakira and I'm with Love Inc., the pride of North Oakland County. We have been the prior recipients of a few of these projects. And actually, we're providing some of the funding that we're using. As some of you, you guys mostly know, but I don't know if everyone else knows, our mission is to mobilize local churches to help people in need. And we're seeing a lot of that lately. So we've been using a lot of the funds when people are calling in. They say to us, you know, I don't have enough money to pay my bills. I don't have enough money to, you know, get to work, you know, gas cards. I need help with our utilities. So we have been asked, been using the money to help the community that way. I just got a recent number. And within the last quarter, we've used those funds to help about 12 families in the area with $3,042. So the needs are, they're there, they're increasing. I was just talking to a police officer over there. So about, I don't think people realize it's all over this area, but there is a large population of homeless people. So we're trying to figure out, we're working with some agencies in Oakland County to figure out how to help those people. But in the meanwhile, we're trying to use the local resources that we have to get them some help with their immediate needs. I don't know if there are any questions. If there's anything else anybody wants to ask, in the middle of what we do. We've been around since 2007. I've been the director since 2017. We have a staff of about two and a half. We've worked really closely with Fish. You know, they've also been recipients in the past. And so it's a really great partnership. I started to work with this city of Auburn Hills, too, to see if we can find some helpers among the local homeless folks to get them to some hotels in the Auburn Hills area, which is probably not ideal. But we're just seeing a lot more need. A lot of the local parks are no longer, from what we understand, locally owned. So a lot of folks are getting kicked out of them because there's not a lot of needs. So we're just seeing a lot of need in trying to help in any small way that we can.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate everything you do and for coming tonight to listen to us.
We love what we do. We couldn't do it without, you know, community organizations and governments to help us with those grants. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this public hearing item? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Public motion to close the public hearing at 7:06.
Support.
Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Bojo. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nay? Motion is closed, or hearing is closed. Next, the second public hearing is for the purpose of reprogramming Project Year 19 and 20 funds. And I believe that is to, we want to reprogram the funds to go from removal of architectural barriers to the asbestos removal.
Yep. Yep, for 18 West Vertic over here. And it's, and I spoke to the county last week. Some of the funds we've already expended on the survey that we worked, we had done so far, will be eligible for some of that reimbursement as well. I think it was around $2,000, I think we spent on that. So we'll be able to recoup some of that cost as well. And then if this gets reprogrammed, gets, then we can go out to bid perhaps over this winter and get the work done. And this, whether the building's renovated or demolished doesn't matter. It would have to be done, so it's a good use of these funds.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:07 PM.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. The hearing is open. Would anyone like to speak to the reprogramming of funds? Please feel free to step up to the podium. Seeing no one moving, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved at 7:08.
Support.
Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Bojo. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nay? And that hearing is also closed. Thank you. Next is our call to the public. So this is the time during the meeting for anyone who wishes to address council on any item. Please feel free to step up to the podium, share your movement and comments. Seeing no movement, we will move on to our consent agenda, item 7A. Is there a motion for 7A 1 and 2?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item A 1 and 2.
Support. Motion by Helmut, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nay? Motion carries. Then on to 7B approval items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item B. 1, 2, and 3 include the bills amount of $302,000. I would have $46,060.
Support.
Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Nikasia. A roll call vote, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Motion carries. And number eight, this is our unfinished old business. First up, we have the DPW new loader purchase consideration.
Okay, in your packet, we have a memo from the DPW Director Brantley, and he's here to speak to that or answer any questions.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
So we were going for our budget back in February, March timeframe. We did budget some funds for the purchase of a new wheel loader. We did budget $220,000 in that fund. We had actually four different loaders come out. And we're presenting three bids for wheel loaders. And we're recommending that the village purchase the Case 621G wheel loader for $195,758.17. This is going to replace our 1992 wheel loader down here.
Well, what's wrong with it?
It's a little. So it started giving us a little bit of some problems. So that's why after 32 years, we're looking to replace it.
Just how old is this?
It's, this is a brand new 2024. Longer.
Scrap value.
We're requesting purchase of, we get 48 month, $4,000 machine warranty and also three year, $3,000 pro-care maintenance service, which includes like oil changes and all that for three years. And also we're including the Senate Works pick up panels.
And you're selling existing for?
Trading in, we're hit about, I think it's $18 for trading in.
The $195 number is the net.
Yeah.
Number. So they had, like I said, they had at least three units onsite over the summer, and they were trying them out for, what, a week or so?
About a week each, yeah.
Yeah, so they got to try out each other.
Fit our needs, it's the same size loader that we have now. So it's been, you know, loads of trucks and mulch and stuff and sand and
What is it, what you'd like to allow that more quickly?
Visibility, the service, some of the service aspects of it. User-friendly.
Do you have any knowledge on the age of these trees? Because we use these for 23 years.
Oh, they should be, they should be 25, 30-year piece of equipment. As long as they're maintained, they should, they should last long enough. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2024 Case 621G wheel loader for purchase price not to exceed $195,758.17.
Second.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nikasia. Any further discussion, questions, or comments?
After kind of looking at the, you know, the service and everything that comes with it, this is the most reasonable price. Hearing that it meets your needs as well, too. We should take them up on, under your recommendation.
Agreed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks. All right, next is 8B. The trees in Centennial Park, good consideration. For the removal of the trees.
Yep, and Mr. Brantley's got a memo in there, and he talks about his recommendation from an arborist from Owen Tree who looked at the trees, showed the diseased nature of them. And it's just funny because just today, Vicki, who works in our office, said that they were sitting across the park over the weekend and saw that large maple on the northwest side there near Merrill, Maryland. She was looking at that one over there, thought, boy, that tree is looking bad, so.
We discussed this a couple of months ago, the trees. So we had companies come up, give us bids on the removal of them. An arborist came up and did a survey of them. He recommended that be removed.
Yeah, I agree, I read about that, too. With the public safety aspect of it, it really is a problem. I know nobody likes to see trees removed, but when they're diseased, you gotta get rid of them before they fall apart.
The back tree by Merrill, Merrill, it's a silver maple. They're not really nice trees. So that's really exceeded its life. It's a very large tree. Trees out front, they're nice Norway maples, or they were at one time, but they're starting to die out. And we do, you know, when we did our 2020 tree program, we do have trees on the sidewalk now that we never had before. So over time, as those trees grow, it will kind of fill in that area.
Along the front there.
Along the front, yeah. So we're recommending that contract that tree experts, which we have contracted them for for the cost of $3,200 for removal. That's removable. They'll take all the large wood, they'll stump it, and all we have to do is clean up the chips and the topsoil and seed.
I'm glad you had worked with them before, because their quote is much lower than the other two. So you have experience with them, so you know what you're getting.
Yes, exactly.
Just curious, I mean, some of them are almost double the price. Do you have an idea of why that is?
It's very odd when you contact these tree companies, it depends on their schedule.
Okay.
If they don't have, we've, every one of these tree companies we've hired before.
Okay.
And it's, depends on what their schedule is. And if there's any storms that have happened recently and they're really busy, the pricing is to elevate. But we have all three companies.
I'll make a motion to approve town's recommendation to town to connect the tree experts to move three trees to Centennial Park for a point amount to complete their 200 dollars.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Bojo. Any further questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote.
Helmut?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Great.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much. 8C is the employment agreement for our new clerk.
Yeah, Council, Bob Davidson and I have been working on this. I sent it to her a few weeks back. She responded back to me. We worked out a couple of little things, answered a couple of questions she had. But you'll see, she is in agreement with, and Bob and I are both, are as well. Very similar, almost to the T of the current agreement with clerk. You know, we have the staggered salaries for the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association, Basic Institute, Advanced Institute, and then the last increased upon certification. A beginning salary of $65,000. And everything else is very, very similar, very minor changes, if any. And she is scheduled to begin next Monday.
Great.
Provided we get this approved.
I'll make a motion to authorize the approval of the employment agreement for our new clerk slash treasurer as presented.
And to have it executed.
And to have it executed by the village manager. And, oh, well, I guess it's to have it executed, yeah.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Helmut. Any discussion, questions, comments?
Yeah, on the three bullets that changed under the salary, so if the clerk doesn't complete by those dates, then the raise doesn't happen, or is that negotiated?
That's correct. And again, that's pretty far out, because some of it has to do with scheduling of those classes and the institute, too. So that, if you look, see, that's like a year and a half out. So there should be plenty of time to reach that first benchmark, and then another year for the following. And Terry Oneick went through the same process with the July timeframes as well.
And then the third bullet, though, does not have a date associated with that. Is it the anticipation that that would be sooner, later?
You know, I don't know the exact timeframe after they finish the Advanced Institute, and then they do some more certification process. I don't know if that's a full year out or not. I don't know that.
Okay.
Depends on the scheduling for the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association.
Once they do the first two, they're, they're pretty teed up to get that third one.
The third one, okay.
It's a, it's good for their resume, for their career. It's good for us.
Right.
A lot of it has to do with, you get points for a certain number of years of service.
Right.
You get points if you've done three budgets. You get points if you've done all these different things. If you can get those points together, then you can get that on the 28th, if you could ask that.
I don't know, like Terry managed to do this even with COVID. Is that right?
I think so. She started in July of 18. So, yeah, it got delayed, I think, a little bit.
She had some tail end delays, but she got off to a good start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think we had to move any of the benchmarks. I don't think so from her, because of the classes. I think they were able to do it. So we have the motion, okay, we already had the motion. Cook and Helmut, all right, just make sure I have my notes right.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay, do a roll call vote.
Okay, Bojo?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Helmut? Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Wonderful. Next, nine, new business, the CDBG Project Year. Proposed resolution to allocate those funds.
A lot of CDBG stuff there.
Are you programming this correctly, does this check?
I believe so. It's weird the way they do those. It's like way out in advance that you hear about it, but then they don't, you approve funds, they don't even become eligible for like over a year. So they're in the rears quite a bit. So of that, $10,005.72, part of that is subsistence payments that you have done in the past that you should choose someone to, where those go to, and the other will be for the removal of architectural barriers.
Did Fish, did we award to Fish last year?
He didn't.
Okay.
I think so. And I was talking to Terry today on the phone about this, and she said that she thought Fish was really hurting because of the, after the pandemic, they had a lot of money. Then they didn't get as much, and so they're kind of, they had provided her, a letter you saw in your packet there, requesting that they be considered for this this year. And I think that she had said there was some, still some funds unused through Love Inc., if I recall, from what Terry was saying today on the current year. And then I think they're getting loaded up, or is it Fish? Fish will get theirs after the first of the year, from last year's approval. So again, it's a years or so in the rears.
Am I wrong in thinking that we did Fish twice in a row because of it?
I don't recall that in a row thing.
I think Fish ended up giving it back and we awarded it to someone else because they had so much.
Yes, right after COVID and all that, they really got a lot given to them. And so we didn't, one year, because they were like, we don't need it. Back in 2021 or something like that.
Did somebody else twice in a row because of that? Okay, that may sound terrible, or something like that.
But, but now, you know, I think there is conversation, and there's a note in there from Fish explaining to their situation, they were requesting and being hopeful to get that. Because it does go to locals right here as well.
I'll make a motion that we we award the CDBG funds to Fish.
Okay.
Do you have to have the amount?
Well, the amount is in the 3,500. There's a minimum of 3,500. They save up to 30%. Our 30% is only like 3,100, so they make an exception for us. We do 3,500. But 35 is in the project name. We have $7,072 available for architectural barriers, barrier removal, and then Food Bank sustenance payments, an amount of 3,500.
Do you need them together or separate?
It's, it's all, together is good. If you look on the resolution in the back, project name, they're listed there, the second page.
Okay, what did I miss in my motion?
So you, you got Food Bank sustenance payments in amount of 3,500 or two, and you made the motion for Fish.
Yeah.
But along with that should be the removal of architectural barriers projects in amount of 7,072.
Yeah. Architectural barriers in amount of 7,000.
$73?
$73?
72.
72, sorry.
Support.
Okay, motion by Bojo, seconded by Nikasia. So last year we awarded to Fish, and we're alternating with the Love Inc. this year, or is that not what you were thinking?
My thought was the gave them, and they gave it back to us when they didn't need it. And they're, they're telling us that they really need it right now. And I just feel like it's
Fish?
Yeah. Seeing that, you know, they're doing things like school snacks. I don't know if they've ever used to do that. But to me, it just, it just feels like they gave it back to us when we tried to give it to them so that we could give it to somebody who needed it. And the two programs went together. And it just too many, it just
That's totally fine. I just wanted to make sure that you, just making sure you're, I just wanted to understand your reasoning. So thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, do a roll call vote, please.
All right, Nikasia?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
No. Motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The next one is the CDBG reprogramming request. And this is to use the money for the asbestos removal, like I mentioned earlier in the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So I will make a motion to adopt proposed resolution 24-10 as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Kemp. Any discussions or questions, comments on this item?
Just, I, I have a question. Do we have to, is there like a posting that has to go out when you're doing this type of thing?
Very much so. So I already put a bid out for the doors, actually here. And they were going to be a slider door like we have on the other side of the building. We use Michigan Mitten or BidNet now is acceptable, because it's a wide-reaching program. But when I put it out, probably the end of August, it was out there for like two and a half weeks. We got zero bids. I even called a couple of local bidders, and they're like, well, the sliding doors are kind of out of their comfort zone to some degree. I got a name that someone had put some doors out. And I think at the Township Parks and Rec, reached out to that contractor. He came out, said, yeah, I can vote that. Gave us a quote, looked it all over. We got the quote, and I was looking it over, and I asked him some questions. If you recall, we have the call box and a push-button thing on the back wall here. The door was going to slide so far over, it was mounted on the outside, that those were going to have to be removed, relocated to some degree. And we really didn't want to deal with that, because those are foam wares coming underneath the building and up around through that brick wall. And so I said, well, what about just taking these doors and replacing them with the normal swing-type doors with push buttons, you know? And of course, he can do that, but because it's different than the original bid that was out there, I spoke to the county last week, we're going to have to rebid it with that type of a spec out there. So we'll be starting to rebid that out. It'll take a few weeks. Maybe I'll have something back in December for a bid consideration. But our hope is to use that removal for these doors here coming into council chambers. But, yeah, we have to follow that process. Again, because of what I bid, nobody bid on it. We pivoted, got a different product someone bid on. But because that wasn't bid out, we still have to bid it out.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Nikasia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Helmut? Helmut. Helmut's in, yes. Cook?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Okay, try that again, reading and ticking at the same time.
Multi-take scan. Okay, thank you. Motion carries, that resolution is adopted. Number nine, C, is the zoning ordinance amendment. Second reading for the landscape ordinance amendments. As we refresh our memory, these were some clarification.
Yeah, and yeah, some updating the who can be in charge and the listings of the plantings and where those listings should be tied to, whether it's a nursery association. They updated that, trying to make it a little bit easier for those who come with site plants, because they're kind of all over the place. So I think the planning commission said, well, why don't we choose like this list of the, I don't know, national nurseries, whatever group, and provided that list upfront for those, so they can choose off that list better. And then there's some other ads and things about enforcement, things like that. The planning commission discussed it for quite a bit, and was brought back here for the first time last month.
Great, thank you. I will move to approve the second reading for the landscape ordinance amendments.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
You're making me do that again, aren't you? Bojo?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Nine D, the recommendation from the DDA for the DDA director position and salary.
Okay, I forwarded a recommendation from the DDA chair, I think that was in your packet?
Yes.
I don't know if it's in mine, but it was in yours. I don't know if it's in mine, but it was in yours. And then, um, I, I did provide some background information to council members and other department heads and salaries, and comparative. Uh, seniorities and things like that, a couple of weeks ago. And I know that we fielded some question, we fielded some questions, and myself and Mr. Davis about, um, statute and things like that, and I think we've. Got most everything back to you folks that we needed to.
So the job wasn't posted. Who are, we're going to say the job gets reposted for the public?
I think it's in our. Is it our, our personnel manual talks about it being posted and, and using a fair and open process.
I'm sorry.
I think the, the ordinance or the, and the personnel manual say that we should use an, an open process. Is what, but I don't think the law requires it, I think it was a question we fielded, um, and Mr. Davis did. Give some feedback on that, to at least one council member, if not more. About whether it had to be done lawfully, or whether the law required it to be posted or not.
So that, the statute that governs the DDA simply says that the, um. DDA may employ and fix the comp of a director. Subject to your approval. So you have to approve the selection and the compensation. The DDA statute giving rise to the DDA does not indicate that the position has to be posted. It just allows the DDA to make a selection subject to your approval of both the selection and the compensation. So that's the issue really, um, how the DDA statute lays it out.
I think one of the things you was, she might alluded to was our personnel manual that we, uh, have for, for village, for village hiring, when we hire. Um, a, a staff at our office, something like that, the person, our personnel manual says that we should follow an open process.
And the DDA is not covered in that as well? I mean, whether they're only charities, you know, or if they're only going to say that they have a few of your artists.
We use it as a, um, as, as to what benefits and stuff they get, they're following the personal manual that helps to define benefits, like holidays are determined by the personal manual and things like that. But the agreement itself is a standalone agreement, um, that must follow the statute for one and state law, and approved by this board.
So some of the things that I would like to see, um, a new executive director do, um, are covered in the Michigan Downtown Association Professional Downtown Management Certification Program. Um, there's. Five, or well, there's ten areas, there's quite a few areas here. Particularly, there's ten, um, different parts of the program, but I think they're different sessions. Um, they're offered in a three-year cycle. And I'll just go through them for the sake of it. But these are some of the things that I'm looking for that we haven't necessarily had yet, so. The downtown management basics, legal structures, reporting and funding options, intro to public policy and municipal finance, assessing, meeting management. Um, building relationships with stakeholders, planning, zoning, and technical training, which is coordinating construction projects. So all of these topics are things that, um. A DDA director needs to kind of have knowledge under their belt for. Um, but that our manager and clerk, uh, have been doing over the past number of years as support, and so, and looking for a new executive director. I would want someone who is open to taking on, either has this, or open on taking the learning opportunity to get these skills. Um, the DDA recommends Kimberly Smith, I think she's more than able to meet these goals and to learn these skills. And so, um, just for purposes of conversation, I would like to have Kimberly be our, uh, DDA director. And, uh, perhaps put into her employment contract, uh, the certification program specifically, and then as she hits the milestones, it could, um. Result in salary increases, kind of like how our court treasurer's contract is tailored. Any thoughts on that, or different thoughts, free to share?
I'm right with you when we call qualifications and certifications. I don't know if anybody's talked to Kimberly Smith about them yet. I think the charters of these, I think we decided this fifty dollars a class, and they would be paid for by the, the DDA. And I just think we need to come up with a, a reasonable salary, base salary, and how much the increase would be after how many certifications.
Is it a yearly certification process, like, or step similar to the present?
It, it's not really similar, where, whereas the treasurer's one has the basic institute, the advanced institute, and then the final certification, so there's kind of built-in steps automatically. This one, if you look on, uh, I think it's the third page that I printed out for you, it's, it has the fifteen bullet point items that are there, and I. Speaking to the director of the Michigan Downtown Association, they're actually going to add one more bullet item. Um, I don't know what that last bullet item is of topic, so it will be sixteen areas of proficiency to meet for someone to become a professional downtown management and be certified. So again, they're all grouped together in one thing, so once you go through the three-year process, and that's when you then meet all those and become, get certification, so. You could break it up in chunks your own, but there isn't built-in steps like the treasurer's institute.
Uh, each one is offered in a three-year cycle, so you, you, if you wanted to create milestones, you could. You could isolate out the, the five that you believe are the most important, and have those attended to. As early as possible, give me rise to one milestone, and then five more, or four more, whatever. When sixteen divided by three, doesn't go well.
And I don't know, scheduling-wise, they might only have one a year and a half into it.
Yeah, so you have to look at the schedule, but you could prioritize them.
Yeah, I'd like to prioritize them, and it depends on, like I said, the schedule of when they're actually offered, but I think some of these, you know. Like, just in seeing Kimberly work with our former director, like, they already have down, you know, the marketing and stuff like that, just some of the other things. Um, would be great. Another topic I want to bring up with council is, I know, um, or at least I believe the DDA is discussing, um, a second hire. And so, um, I don't believe that the DDA needs two full-time people, I don't know what the DDA will decide as far as. The assistant director position going forward, if that stays part-time or is full-time. Obviously, it would require a budget, a budget amendment to come to council, if they're going to have two full-time people. But having two full-time people do a job, or one full-time person do a job, makes a difference for me, in salary, for example. At least, that's kind of just what I was thinking, but.
Thing is, either way, even if you intended to be a one-person job. It, it just may end up needing a second full-time, even with all these extra qualifications that we're asking to be doing. So I, I think it's just most important to look at it as just this position. Do, and, and, and when they come to us with the idea of a second. They do need to come to us with a second, right, and they don't, they don't have to within the system, that's.
Well, depend, if it's a budget amendment, I, I don't know if it would be a budget amendment. You, you approve their budget.
So right now, they're budgeting for two?
I don't, don't, this budget had it in at the beginning of the budget when it was adopted in May, I'd have to go back and double-check that. I'm not sure when the conversation's exactly started on this, uh, they always had two persons in, Kimberly was already in, they had a full-time director and part-time, I think it was twenty-five hours a week, or twenty-seven hours a week, something like that. So they already had that salary budgeted in for that amount.
Okay.
Again, leaping from twenty-five hours at part-time to full-time, which, which includes some benefits and holidays and things like that, that's, that would, uh. Bust that budget line, so to speak, and so there would be a budget amendment involved.
See, that, that's where I was confused, I thought she was a full-timer, I think.
No.
Okay, so yeah, I would think that would be something certainly to be addressed when it comes out, because.
They've been fortunate to last, well, this past year, they had two of the interns that were paid for the, uh, fourth county community foundation, I believe the year before that was one. Again, those are great, and, and hopefully they can, uh, get that same help next year, because during the summertime, they are so much busier than, you know, the off-season, Januaries and such. So if you go into summertime, you definitely need more time then, but then the balance of the year, I guess, is yet to be worked out and determined, depends on how they, the DDA. Wants to pursue events and programming and things like that as well. To what degree do they need, woman power, not manpower. Person power, there you go. Bodies.
E.P.C.
Because we can, then we can just wait on talking about any additional until it happens, I mean, it sounds like it would need to come. Most things would be communication going forward between the DDA and the village councils, we both know what we're each doing, and. Particularly for the budget, which I think we're going to get in order better this year with more advanced meetings and stuff like that, um, and working together, so. Hopefully that will not be an issue going forward.
I'd really like to hear more, um. About the business, the government aspects, um, of the DDA and of the meetings. It's all three years, so, but still, it's, um. I, I do feel like that is something that would be important, like a benchmark, and there, you know, may be some ways to add that in along with. Following up on those additional certifications that we're asking for. Right, I do have a concern at coming in at the salary. I do feel like the salary is provided based on, um. Value that was brought to the community, um, performance base to get up to this. Based on, on changes and, and the. Things brought into the community, and I think that it's pretty close to a max for that position. Um, and I don't think it's fair to bring somebody in at a max out, base scale. And never, I mean, at this point, even with those certifications, what could you possibly add to it? So I do believe that the salary is above budget for a new position. Uh, I think it's a salary to strike for each, and I don't think it's, I believe it's an attainable salary, but I don't believe it's a higher salary.
I mean, at the same time, we're asking. Um, them to do the same work as well too, right? And so, there's no material difference. Um, but I do, I do hear what you're saying as well too.
I guess I, I'll go, I think we all know I didn't want to pay this salary to anybody. Six months ago, I was going for this. I think, in my opinion, just to throw a number out there, I think sixty to start with two thousand dollars. One degree to the milestones that are set up, um, annually, well. However, the milestones are set up. There's two thousand is a three-point-three percent raise, I think. On top of any of the rates the DDA might grant them on July first. I think that's a pretty good salary for a new employee that really has. Your clerk's been doing this twenty years. She believes has been in law enforcement for thirty-two years?
Thirty-one.
I was there, um, and he's been the chief for seven years, dad's been doing this since nineteen eighty-six. Temple, part-time, has been full-time since nineteen, he asks us, eighteen ninety. And then he's been the DPD director since two thousand. Five? Yeah, it's not that. I mean, that's, those are just incredible years, and you compare the salaries. To pay seventy-two thousand to somebody with minimal experience compared to those salaries we're paying them, I think sixty is a great place to start.
I think I might be a little, but I think it's closer. I, I would probably. Think that up a bit, sixty-three, sixty-four, I know it's not a huge difference, at least the difference though. I think we have to, I think all the salaries are, um. For everybody, especially the people who've been so many years.
Mo, Mo, was your point to add to the salary upon the completion of chunks of these, or all of these, maybe you, maybe you could raise.
Three years, a three-year cycle?
But maybe you could.
And there's sixteen of them, there's going to be.
Well, they're all offered within, so you can do as many as you want, but they come around every three years, so. Are you saying maybe divide these into three, and then two thousand every time they complete a third of them?
Yeah.
Not just two thou, I was just clarifying that for Lori, so really the salary is achievable to sixty-six.
Close thirties.
Right.
So we're, I, you know, I had it somewhere, do we have our DDA directors or anyone?
They're pretty high, I think.
Okay. I was sixty.
Eighty, forty-six, I believe. Twenty-six percent, I would.
And you know, but the, thank you. I knew I had somewhere. Um, we. Those certifications, um. What about the ones that. We aren't so sure are truly needed, are strong, that she, that the current hire Kimberly has strong skills in already? Other. If she went through them at, with the DDA board and came to us and said, these are the ones we, we were like, she already exceeds that. Within a short period. Is there, are you thinking all the credit deals, or are you thinking all of the certifications that are offered on a three-year?
Let's get the certificate.
Still need to go through them.
We have one certification, it wants to complete all of them.
Oh, okay.
The, 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 the goal here is to get the.
To get the certificate.
The M.I.P.D.M. certificate, which requires you do all of them.
I think we can prioritize them for sure, if it's possible, based on when they're offered.
Actually, thought I read somewhere, if they wanted to, they could. Opt out of, of certification by, I don't know, writing an essay, drawing a picture.
There are some options to get credit for ones, if you have like a significant education or certification already. Um, and obviously, Kimberly has a, a master's in, in other areas of human resource and stuff. But one of the things they do talk about in there, that it needs to be in a downtown management, um. Category, so to speak, um, so it's, it's up to them, Michigan Downtown Association, whether they would grant any credit, at least in their program, based on what she already has obtained.
I, I misunderstood, I thought it was a certification for each class, and each certification.
No.
You for three years.
One package gets you to one certification.
And then do they have to retake them to get the next three years, there's new classes?
No, I think there's a continuing education, uh, element to it.
And so we would want to add something in there about keeping up with the continuing education, once those are, are matched as well. But yeah, I, I agree that there's certain prioritize, pri- priorities of those that need to be taken. Just based on what we've seen. We don't have Terry here, and, you know, Joey, you're going to be doing a lot with training a new clerk, and working with a new clerk, and. Learning the ropes and, and getting used to each other and that, and, um, and so it makes a lot of sense to bring somebody in who knows this job. Who knows what's been going on with it, but with, um, she's, with her educational background, she will be able to exceed and, and these.
But with um she's, with her educational background, she will be able to exceed in in these areas. And um so it, it makes sense to, to add those benchmarks and and add, add that in.
Yeah, I agree, it'll be no problem for Kimberly at all. Um she's-
No, she'll be good.
Exceptional resume, so um if you notice on the, on page, on the last page of the certificate program handout that we have in front of us, there's certain ones that are underlined and those are some of the, I think, higher priority ones. If they're offered on demand, so that might be something where it's, you know, kind of check the schedule for what's offered each year, but also like the ones that are on demand, she can take care of it away, to satisfy that initial pay increase.
Yeah, it's, it looks like the other subjects are often one, two, or three-year cycle, so. I don't know if she's gonna be able to do all the underlying ones, the first year, it's a chunk of those are only offered.
Underlying ones are on demand and then other things like generally.
I just don't wonder if they have to miss like one of the options that are only available this year.
Right. Yeah, for sure. And I don't know how much work each one of these are, but um-
I, I don't know how it's outlined.
Yeah.
What if she somehow gets them all within the first year?
I don't bet she'll be able to if some of them are only offered on a three-year cycle.
Yes.
It's only offered at like certain times of the three-year cycle.
Okay. She's wondering, I just wanna make sure if she, if somehow she hits that two-thirds mark, those benchmarks are not going to be, you only get it this year and you only get it this year. It's going to be once you hit those benchmarks at the next budget, that increase comes in for whatever benchmarks you hit, right? So if she hits two that first year, she gets whole benchmarks.
That's a good question. Yeah. Is it built in or not? So so, so say it's two thousand each year, is it, as long as you are meeting them, you get two thousand? Or do you jump to four and you've gotten more? For budgeting purposes, I don't know.
Well, you could, you could la-, you could language that and just say that the two thousand increments cannot occur. They have to be spaced out by so much time.
I um I don't know if I like the idea of spacing them out in that way, just because I do feel like we have somebody who has the ability, the knowledge and drive to get hit two benchmarks in year one, then I think-
You get the money.
Both benchmarks go.
How much time on work did it take out of the office to do?
Well, I'm just pointing at this, the one-third one, you know, all the time online. And then one of the other third are this year. And so she does the one-third that are this year and she's like, I've got the time in the winter, you know, we're not, not as much is going on. Um you've got somebody whose educational background tells me that that's possible to happen. And that's why I just wanna bring that up. I think once the benchmarks are hit, they're headed that at that budget, they're hit.
It's probably doable in between dorm parties, right? I mean, you know.
Well, she's exempt, so she's been working many hours when she wants to finish them all, so.
So for, for, for other, for other reasons, I have, I have a pretty recent and comprehensive legal-type memo that outlines all of the laws pertaining to a DDA. What authority is granted to a DDA, how they get the authority, what they're allowed to do, what they can't do. I can provide that at no cost to her if she wants to read it. But I'll send it to you and you can look through it and decide if she should read it. It's just, it's not opinion, it's just the law broken down-
For sure.
Into a readable format.
Yep.
That would be great. I, I'd like to see, I know you're filling up the chair of the hornets as friendly.
All right. I'll get that through you.
For the whole board, all right?
Well, I'll give it to you, you do, you do what you want to.
Their packets only.
Yeah, tho-, that, that's something different. I'm talking about, it's a, that was, not what I have in the packet. It's a, it's a more of a DDA one-on-one. When did the law come about? What does it allow? How do you create a DDA? What does the DDA do? How do they raise money? How are they allowed to raise money? It's, it's right all the way through.
Yep, that would be great.
So Kimberly has been here since twenty-twenty-two at basically half of an FTE, right? So that's-
Twenty-one hours.
So that's effectively one-year experience. At that time, her last DDA director was making sixty-four.
The current one that just left?
Yes.
Um no, seventy-one and change, I believe, with the last.
No, he's talking-
No, year one.
Oh, oh, okay. Um I'd have, I gave my cheat sheet to Lori, so I-
That would have been sixty.
After one-
After one year, I think he's talking about. There was an interim period. And then once you came on full-time, that's what she started at sixty. And then a year later, I believe there was a, an increase. So that would've been, yeah, April, March, April of twenty-one. I think that was annual increases each year.
Yeah, it's a sixty-four. Is that what you're saying, Jacob?
Yeah. After the one year, that's what you're, he's gonna make an equation, I think, and-
Okay, but still starting at sixty in a year. I'm assuming the DDA is gonna give her a raise to give everybody say three percent. That's gonna take her up to sixty-three.
Sixty-one-eight. That's eight, eighteen-hundred.
Without meaning any certifications. She means the certification, that's another two thousand, I think, except for thirty-five after one year.
Yeah, so you're talking about the cost of living increases as well, well, yeah.
Which is what those are.
Similar to the clerks agreement that you guys uh have in front of me, we proved. Those were benchmarks in addition to any that were granted by uh annual ones for the clerk through the annual review process.
In the normal course. And they didn't require any further action, they just happened.
Yeah.
Anyone wanna throw a motion on the table?
Throw a motion on the table.
I'll put a motion on the table that you accept the application Smith um as the DDA director as, as um suggested by the DDA over the adjustment salary starting at sixty-two thousand a year with a um benchmark of two thousand for being each third of the-
The Michigan Downtown Association Professional Downtown Management Program?
Professional Downtown Management Program. Certificates. So again, that was a benchmark of meaning of third degrees. Will be each third be two thousand dollar increase.
And that's not based on time, that's merely based on meeting them.
Right, so if two-thirds were met in one year, it would be two benchmarks.
And all other raises in the normal course.
Right.
Right. Okay, sorry.
No, help me out, me.
Nope, that's fine.
No, you're good now.
Is that my motion? All right, um that's my motion, I mean, that is my motion.
Okay, I'll second that. So for budgeting, then, would the DDA need to factor in those uh opportunities to add?
Yes.
In the current budget, you mean?
Yeah, do they need to amend that?
I think there's enough headroom in there, you wouldn't have to.
No, I think you're, you're okay.
There's plenty of headroom in there.
Okay, and then they can keep some headroom in there next budget to allow for the-
Yeah. Next budget, you'll know where she's at.
Right, okay. Any questions for the discussion?
Kimberly has been performing her role, maybe this can be addressed afterwards, but she has been performing increased duties for the past two weeks?
Two or three.
Two or three. Can we adjust?
Do you want the salary retroactive?
Yes.
Okay, so I was gonna say, please let us know when the salary takes effect, so we know if they will-
I could see that on your face, Allison, I could see it.
I'll amend my motion to make that um to make it start the first day of Kimberly stepping into the intern role.
Okay, so it's retroactive, the application, okay.
Okay, I'll support that.
Sorry, Allison, I didn't mean to.
No, you're, no, I appreciate you. Thank you my vision about, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, here none, uh roll call vote, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Nekasiya?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Great discussion. Um congratulations, Kimberly, thank you. Thank you for your patience with us. And for ending the meeting here. Uh Mike E., the manager annual evaluation, uh Mr. Mador, would you like to take that in closed session this evening?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, and then the clerk annual evaluation, um how do we do that without, we just, can we talk about it while she's not here?
Talk behind the bed.
She can't be here to request going into closed session, and that's what's required, right? So-
Set it aside.
Can we table it?
You're, you're-
Is she gonna be?
Your charter says you have to do them in November.
But she's not here, so we don't have to do them, right?
But she's, you can make a motion to fire her right now.
She wouldn't mind that.
I'll make a motion that she has to stay thirteen more years.
With Don, along with Don. Um but yes.
Have a clerk annual evaluation this year?
You could waive it.
You could waive it, I suppose, and you can, your charter says you're, you know, supposed to do it in November, but again, if they're leaving, it's an appointment.
You could, you could do a motion, given the retirement date to waive the two thousand twenty-four clerk review process.
The board.
Okay, motion made by Borjo, seconded by Helms. Um any discussion on waiving the clerk review for this year since our clerk is retiring? None, okay. Um all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nay, motion carries? Um ten, there's no items removed from the consent agenda. Eleven, second opportunity for public comments, if anyone would like to speak during public comment, please approach the podium.
Kimmy Village Council, Pete Schultz, I'm the DDA board chairman. Thank you for affirming our action that the board took of appointing Kimberly as our new executive director. I think she's gonna do a fabulous job. She jumped into it the very next day, um fall into it, doing everything that she possibly could. Um I've been in the office just about every single day myself, working with her and going over everything. And there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes in there that you don't see what's going on on a regular basis. I mean, the times that I've been in there, there's probably six business people that have walked into there that are actually needing something done or part of the planning going forward, or even new business owners that are coming into town, helping them with signed grants, building grants, and everything like this. But again, it's, it's hard to put a number on it or a task on it, but you don't see it or you, you, you know, it's not, it's, it's not even something you can put in a report of how much is, is going on, you know, the networking that takes place. Um there's a lot of activities that are coming out, and I'm sure she's gonna touch on it and Nick's gonna touch on it when you do the report, or Jacob, excuse me, when you do the report later on, but uh thank you very much and look forward to it.
Thank you, thank you. Any other uh public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to committee reports. Um Noda?
Uh I don't really have anything, but um yeah, I assume I won't be at it this month, but we'll have somebody in by then. Whoever you assign to Noda, I am available, have them reach out to me and I will give them the updates that I have and just information box meetings, so please let me on available.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Planning commission and cable commission?
The planning commission has it not. The cable commission has it not, uh the personnel committee has. And we did conduct the performance evaluation for the station manager. And we'll be presented that at our next meeting, which is not until, I believe it's December second was the date we had settled out, so we can adopt our question.
Great, thank you. The DDA?
Um Kimberly, would you like to come up and? Um so it was a, it was a packed agenda. Um there was a lot to kind of decide with, with Kelly's absence. Um voted on, voted on a few things, I'm sure we've read some of them in the paper and whatnot, but then also um had, had the motions and come out of that, and then also Kimberly's appointment, so Kimberly, what is coming up?
I've got so much. It's very, very busy right now, this is our busiest uh season and time of the year. Uh we have, this weekend, we have a, a marketing initiative to try and get business, our people into downtown to shop. Um so we have two initiatives, a ladies' shopping day and then a doomsday to kind of follow that up, to get two separate pieces, it'll be a puzzle to come in and do their holiday shopping. We also have small business Saturday, which happens to fall on Remembrance Day. So we're going to be doing both, um celebrating both pieces of that, or holding space for both. So we'll be having a little kickoff in the park and offering what we're calling a hug in a mug um to try and help bring the community together if they choose to come together. If not, we do offer options such as shopping on um the store's website or OC Shop Main Street. Our alternatives for people that don't feel like coming together with other people that day. We also have the soup and sweet stroll, which I'm sure you've all heard a lot about, I've been getting a lot of questions. Tickets finally went on sale today, so I think that should calm the masses a little bit. Um and then we also have the Polar Express trolley ride and indoor undermarket in mid-December that we have going on. Um I took some training last week and presented on our gift card program with MDA, which is the group that you guys were talking about when it comes to the certifications. And just to clarify, a couple of those sessions that I sat through were eligible for credits for that certification. I believe you have to get approved to join the program first, and from my understanding, that doesn't take place until September, I think Joe was mentioning. So from a timing standpoint, we might, excuse me, might wanna think about that. If I'm not even eligible to join that program for another almost nine months, um we wanna talk about what that would look like. Uh but it was wonderful information, kind of talking through what you're looking for from um a director. The pieces that maybe weren't highlighted um with my predecessor or things that we didn't focus on as a team. There are opportunities for sure to look at that, that piece of it. Um and I, I'm just a note eater and excited about that piece of it, it's very interesting to me. So that was a great experience to walk through that. Um you know, meeting with the Resiliency Center and Common Ground to help support um Remembrance Day. And then also, we just have, as Pete mentioned, we have a revolving door. Um I thought it was busy before, but this is a whole new level of busy. So um just trying to work with businesses, met with a new business owner in downtown that moved into the Blue Ivy space. Um so we're excited to encourage them to join the DDA and to be more um um active within our community. I think that was everything. Sorry for anything, Pete. Any questions?
Change.
Captain change. We don't have any bold changs until holidays over. Any questions or clarification?
I would just like to tell you thank you and congrats on stepping into the position. I know you're kind of excited and-
Actually, I haven't heard her accept it yet.
Oh, yeah. I've had it.
Just saying.
I've accepted it. I'll even say for it.
It'll be late tomorrow, I'll decide.
Yeah, maybe I'll take tomorrow to think about it. Did you wanna think about it?
Yeah, I, I think we're, um I think we really are lucky to have you um to be able to, you know, pass the torch to and carry us through this busy time that's coming up. We have a lot of things coming up with everything on the schedule, so um thank you for, um thank you for picking that torch up and kind of carrying it across the, the line here for uh the next couple months, for sure.
Absolutely, and I do wanna say, you know, Kelly was a wonderful manager, she engaged me in almost everything that she did. So I like to look at it like we're a team working on a lot of the same things. So thankfully, um this process is going smoother than it would if it were somebody that were new to the organization, because this is my third time going through most of these events. Um so I am able to have a little, um I'm able to add small bits, manageable pieces to elevate the event. But I do think one of the things that, as a DDA, we wanna talk about, like our division of time and what we wanna put our focus on over the- But I do think one of the things that, as a DDA, we want to talk about, like our division of time and what we want to put our focus on over the next, you know, three to five years, even within the next first year, because we went through the strategic planning with, I think, some of you sat through. Um, so we do see some opportunities to make some course corrections going forward, um, and I am excited about that. Thank you so much, Kimmy.
Um, Pollyanna, true?
Joe? Um, I don't know if I made the last meeting. I don't remember where I put, oh, it was here. I think it was here. But I can't remember what we have. Like, it, it was pretty light and stuck.
I know Linda's out doing the last trail mowing of the year this week, so, uh.
Yeah.
Kind of wrapping up.
Yeah, they have a couple legal, legal encroachments we're working on. I've been working on for a few months now. People have fencing on the property and there's some struggles there, but.
Yeah.
Getting through them.
I'd like to add that I had to report a tree down on the trail. Called Don, got Linda's number. Called Linda, she was gone the next day. That was awesome.
Before it got laid out, I think she was out doing it, too.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Manager Staff and Attorney Report, Mr. Mador?
Um, a couple of things. Uh, the water plant repairs that we talked about last month are behind us now. Uh, we avoided the boil water advisory by working with Eagle and, and Don and I and Artisanal Pioneer who constructed the plant. We all got our minds together, wrapped around it. It was done. Counselperson Nicosia was there, there, there or two after the repair is done, so he got to see the new repairs in, in place. It went pretty smooth. We're very happy. Um, we had them few pressure gauges that were, um, not working great, so while they were there, we had them upgrade those as well. Um, it all worked out well. Um, we're very happy and, and it's a relatively new relationship we have with our folks at the Warren District out of Eagle. Um, we s- we got to know them during eight, uh, the summer when they did their walk-through of all of our facilities and stuff. And some of them were still getting their toes and feet wet on this area and expertise and stuff, too. So, but that's, we've had a lot of contact with them in the last month or two, more than we'd like, um, but it's going well. Uh, the DPW is in the process of hiring a, uh, laborer. It's been posted out there. We've got a ton of responses. I think we've already turned off our ad on the Indeed program. Like, within a week, we were done. Um, Don and Rudy are going through some of those, had some interviews already. Um, you know, just trying to get ahead of the game with the winter coming and, and Don's pending retirement, so that's going okay. The Park Street, uh, paving is scheduled to be done yet this week. Um, I think the weather looks okay for that. Um, they did what they could through the Halloween period. They got a lot done in a hurry there. The weather was cooperating, but uh, there's a much larger conversation that we will have internally with, uh, the contractors and, and the, the slowness of that project and the astoundingly slow progress that was done over the, the summer. So i- it, it's working out. I think the end product everyone's going to be happy with. Um, but yeah, I don't think it's going to work out well for those who are spending a lot more time out there than they're going to get paid for, I think. And then, uh, on the upside, um, MCOs, which is Mission Council, Michigan Council on Law Enforcement Standards, does all the certifications of officers. Um, a couple of years ago, they had grants out there to help agencies fund hiring in police academy. Um, it was like thirty million dollars. It went across the state for about a year or so. Those funds were used up. Many agencies took them up on that, um, and were able to use that funding. You could pay for not only the, the, uh, academy, which is, you know, six, eight, nine thousand, depending where you're at, Delta College, wherever, you also could use it to pay wages while they're in the academy. And so that money's gone, but MCOs has recently announced another ten million is out there, um, for, um, communities like ours and other agencies to look for hiring and employing and, and getting those folks. As you, if you recall, Chief Soul came to you guys and you guys approved us trying to get somebody into that academy. And hopefully, we'll be able to swing something with MCOs and get in some of that money. Um, Chief is already in the process of interviewing and not sure when the new hires come in. If you recall, Officer Irish left us a couple of months ago, it seems now. It's time flies. Uh, we've gone through the hiring process and interviews and have a new person getting close to being on board, get us back to full staff. But we will still follow up and try to get someone in the academy as our plan was, and then hopefully we'll be able to get some of the MCOs money to help cover that cost. And that's all I have for now.
Um, do you have any update on the mass notification system that you're looking into?
Yep, I have a program. I really like it. Um, but I didn't have another, uh, two other ones to give you an option for cost pricing and stuff. Um, so I, as much as I'd like to brought that one to us, I, I figured it's best to get some other numbers, get them out to you. It was around thirty-five hundred dollars a year. Comes with twenty-five thousand text. I really like it because one of the things I liked about this program is there's like a seventeen hundred dollar setup. You think, wow, that's a little higher than you would, well, part of that reason is they purchased names to the US Postal Service with names and phone numbers. So we could potentially get the system preloaded with four, five hundred names and numbers already in it. So that upfront cost is for them to go out, purchase those names, and they do it, like I said, right through USPS. I don't think other ones out there that I've saw, that I've looked at, have that at all. You start from ground zero. You have one, and then you have two people in there and things like that. So I like that one, but I thought it's best to bring you guys a couple of options to look at, something to compare it to.
Thank you.
There's been some recent developments on the Freedom of Information Act as it pertains to police policies and procedures. I'll get that ferreted out and get it over to the police chief as soon as I have it, uh, digested. The courts visit this every once in a while. So I'll get it figured out and get it off to the police chief.
Great. Thank you. Um, okay, council comments?
I gave my question, council comments last month. Here I go.
Didn't know she was going to be back.
I've got nothing.
Nope.
I shouldn't have had to sit next to her, I guess. I mean, I get, Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, my God.
Go Lions.
Go Lions, huh?
Um, I want to say thank you to those in the community that, uh, helped us out with our, uh, fam- little Friendsgiving, uh, food drive to support Lighthouse of Pontiac, Michigan. Um, there's over thirty families that came together with, with, um, tons, tons of family and, and little ones that really gave out of the goodness of their heart. They raised over two tons of food, um, for, for those less fortunate. Um, I'd like to thank Daniel Oxford Elementary School for collecting food, or Oxford Elementary School collecting food, during Lutheran Glitz hair salon, um, and Woodside Bible Church, um, for, for bringing that all together. Really kind of helping folks that, uh, have many jobs, uh, loved ones that they're trying to take care of and just having a tough time making ends meet. So thank you to everyone.
Awesome. Welcome, Kimberly. I'm very excited to see everything you're going to accomplish. Of course, welcome to our new clerk, Vicky, as well, who is not here tonight.
Um, uh, yeah, should you choose to accept your offer, Kimberly, um, I'm looking forward to working with you in the DDA closer and better going forward. Um, and yeah, excited about our new clerk going, uh, coming on board. I'm hoping we can do something for our party clerk treasurer, Terry. So maybe we could think about planning something. I know she's probably watching right now, so, but it'd be nice to get together with her before she leaves. Um, and that is it for me. So, um, next is our closed session and for our audience members. The only thing we have left on the agenda after this is adjournment, so, uh, you are welcome to not have to wait outside. Mr. Mador?
Yes, if I could. I was going to mention, um, Ms. Prather had brought us a young man here earlier today, and he was going here to observe. He's a boy scout, looking on a merit badge of some sort. I don't think it's cooking. Um, but, uh, h- his goal was to observe the, the local government and potentially ask me a couple of questions after the meetings. And I had forgot that we would probably go into closed session for a little while. So rather than you sitting around for twenty, thirty minutes, I'm more than happy to meet with you one day after school or something like that. If you'd like to follow up with me, we can come up here. I.
Actually, I was gonna have to, we could take a ten minute recess.
Yeah, we could do that in interim. That's right. We could take a little bit of recess, uh, before we go into the closed session, as long as it, we're heading that way, and we could do that. Okay.
Thank you for attending.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen two sixty-eight A for employee evaluation.
So we're going into recess.
We make a motion, we go into recess before we do something?
Oh, sorry.
Make sure you do a roll call.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Not on the way out.
Right, okay, we'll take a recess.
Recession? Recession was Borjo, who?
Me. Mo.
Me, okay, Borjo, Helmut.
I think I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen two sixty-eight A for the purpose of employee evaluation.
Support.
Okay, motion by Cook, seconded by Nicosia. A roll call vote?
Nicosia?
Yes.
Kemp? Helmut?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Right, motion carries, and we are now in closed sessions. All right, so we are back in open session, um, and I will make a motion to adjourn at nine fifteen.
Support.
All those who favor aye?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned.